Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakeville Route 79 Corridor Virtual Design Public Hearing. My name is Kathy Doherty and I'm the Project Manager for the Proposed Roadway and Safety Improvement Project in Lakeville, which we will be presenting this evening. I work in the Project Management Section at Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division headquartered in Boston. Due to COVID-19 precautions, this live virtual presentation will replace our usual in-person design public hearing meeting. First, I will cover some procedures associated with this meeting. You will notice that you are automatically muted when you join the meeting. If you wish to ask a question, you will be unmuted at the end of the presentation during the question and answer session. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and is considered a public record. MASTDOT may choose to retain or distribute all video, images, audio, and chat transcript. Therefore, if you do not wish to be recorded, verify that your video feed is off, mute yourself, and refrain from utilizing the chat feature. During this presentation, we will explain the purpose of the hearing, provide an overview of the right-of-way procedures, and present the preliminary design. Finally, we will explain how you can submit your comments and questions about the project, many of which can be included in the official hearing transcript. And handout has been prepared and posted to the MASTDOT website. The handout presents documentation which will be useful to you in understanding the project and submitting formal comments in response to this presentation. The purpose of the hearing is to provide an assured method for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to furnish to the public information concerning the highway construction proposal and to allow every interested resident in the area an opportunity to be heard on the proposed project. At the same time, this hearing allows the Commonwealth an opportunity to receive information from local sources, which will be valuable in making its final decision for which design should be advanced for development. Joining me this evening is Derek Roma, the Right-of-Way Representative for MASTDOT, Richard LaCamera, representing the Board of Selectmen for Lakeville, and Matthew Shute, the Project Manager and an Associate at Beta Group, the Design Consultant for this project. Mr. Roma will cover the right-of-way requirements for the project. Mr. LaCamera will offer a statement of support for the project. And finally, Mr. Shute will present detailed project information. Derek?
Thank you, Kathy. The Right-of-Way Bureau is responsible for acquiring a portion of the necessary rights in private and public lands for the design, construction, and implementation of this project. A secure right-of-way is required for this project. If your property or a portion of it must be acquired by the state or municipality for highway purposes, in the interest of all people of the Commonwealth, your rights are fully protected under the law. Affected property owners' rights are protected under Massachusetts general laws, primarily Chapter 79. Since this project is receiving federal funds, the property owner's rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Acts of 1970 as amended. Procedures are different depending on whether the state or municipality is making the acquisitions. Please refer to the handout for more specific information. The current design plans indicate that fee takings and permanent easements may be required. Other areas may also require temporary construction easements. Affected property owners will be contacted by personnel from the Right-of-Way Bureau, municipal officials, or consultants representing MASTDOT Highway. Procedures used must comply with state and federal regulations governing the acquisition process. When the Commonwealth acting through its Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division indicated it would accept this $9.2 million project for funding, your municipality accepted certain responsibilities. One of these responsibilities is acquiring a portion of the necessary rights in private and public lands for the design, construction, and implementation of this project. Massachusetts Right-of-Way Bureau's function is to review and recommend procedures that your municipality will use in acquiring these rights. Procedures used must comply with both federal and state regulations. At this time, the current design plans indicate there are seven fee acquisitions, 79 permanent easements, and 134 temporary easements required. Frequently municipalities may appeal for donations to minimize the acquisition cost for your community. However, donations are not required, and property owners are entitled to an appraisal, review appraisal, and just compensation. Right-of-way documents will be provided to each owner to help them understand the acquisition process and how the project affects their property. Back to you, Kathy.
You're on mute, Kathy.
Thank you. Thanks, Derek. Now, Mr. LaCamera will make a brief statement of support for this project. Rich?
Thanks, Kathy. This project has been discussed over the past 10 years. I'd like to thank everybody for their support in moving this project forward. MASTDOT is going to give an overview of the project and the schedule and give everybody the opportunity to ask any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. We are currently at 45% design stage, which means that we may not be able to answer all your questions at this time. We estimate the total project cost will be approximately $9.2 million, which will come from federal aid funding, with the Federal Highway Administration funding 80% of the total construction cost. MASTDOT funds the remaining 20%. This project must be programmed in the statewide transportation improvement program in the appropriate federal fiscal year in order for MASTDOT to solicit funds for eventual construction. The total estimated cost of the project does not include the right-of-way acquisition costs. Now we move on to the substance of the presentation. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Matthew Shute, the Design Consultant for the project. He will present the project team, limits, and history of the project, as well as describe the proposed improvements. Please keep in mind that the project we are presenting is still in the preliminary design phase. All your questions and comments will be taken into consideration when completing the final project. Matthew?
Thanks, Kathy. As Kathy mentioned, I'll start off by reviewing the project team. The town of Lakeville is the project proponent, responsible for the design fee and municipal right-of-way acquisitions. As mentioned previously, construction funds for this project will be provided by a combination of state and federal sources, and the town is not responsible for construction funding. Beta Group is the design firm hired by the town to prepare the design and right-of-way documents for submission to MASTDOT. MASTDOT's Highway Division is responsible for administering the design process and providing resident engineer services during construction. Federal Highway Administration is responsible for oversight of the entire design process and contributes a portion of the funding for construction. History of public outreach. There have been three prior public meetings for this project. Some of you attending this virtual meeting tonight have likely attended at least one of these meetings. First, there was a public informational meeting in December of 2011. Next, an informational meeting took place in January of 2016. And finally, in March of last year, a public forum was held. Generally, at all three of these meetings, the majority of attendees seem to have supported the project, and we were able to present graphics of various design alternatives and answer questions from project abutters. The Route 79 project area runs roughly west to east, as shown in yellow on this slide, and is located regionally between Route 140 and 495, as shown on the inset, lower left in red, with this being 140 and 495 in this corner. The westerly project limit is located just to the west of Gulf Ray Road, where the Taunton City Line crosses Route 79, right here. The project then extends approximately 2.5 miles to the east and ends at Clear Pond Road. Within these limits, there are two key intersections that were studied for additional improvements. Those include the intersection with Precinct Street, which is an unsignalized stop-controlled intersection, and the intersection with Route 18, which is currently controlled by a traffic signal. So why do we need this project? I'll try to answer that question over the next few slides by presenting the key existing issues. So the key existing issues for this project are intersection and corridor safety, deficient bicycle accommodation, deficient pedestrian accommodation, pavement deterioration, and stormwater collection. I'll now go through some slides that detail the key issues that I just outlined. First, regarding intersection and corridor safety, this slide presents intersection and roadway segment crashes over the three-year segment from 2014 to 2017. The intersection crashes are in red circles, and the segment accidents are in the green squares. Crash rates are measured in what is called "million entering vehicles." From this graphic, you can see the crash rate for the entire corridor is just below the statewide average. The crash rate at the Route 79-Route 18 intersection exceeds the state average significantly, and the crash rate at the Route 79-Precinct Street intersection is right about at the state average. This slide also illustrates intersection safety issues within the corridor. This is the intersection of Precinct Street with Route 79. This intersection presents challenges as there are really two intersections with Route 79, here and here, that are spaced very close together. Looking at the aerial photo on the bottom right, the leftmost intersection of Precinct Street, in this location, intersects with Route 79 at a skewed angle, which can make it difficult for drivers that are looking to turn left onto Route 79 in this direction, heading west towards Taunton, to look back over their right shoulder for gaps in traffic. Also, for drivers waiting to make that turn, it may be difficult to determine if vehicles on Route 79, driving in this direction, are going to continue on Route 79 or bear right onto Precinct Street, since drivers are not likely to use their directionals if bearing right, traveling to Precinct Street. This slide illustrates the pavement deterioration, stormwater collection, and bicycle and pedestrian deficiencies present throughout the corridor. Looking at the photo on the left, the pavement cracking is apparent. There is no sidewalk on either side of the road, and there is significant sand and silt buildup and deterioration of the edge of pavement due to the lack of a berm or curb along the edge of the road to collect stormwater. The photo on the right further illustrates additional pavement deterioration in the center of the travel lane and the lack of sidewalk or bicycle accommodation on this segment. Moving on to the last slide presenting the existing issues, the photo on the left is looking at the intersection of Route 79 with Route 18. Safety issues here include the limited visibility to some of the traffic signal indicators due to trees and overhead wires, wider travel lanes than are necessary, which promotes higher speeds, and the lack of sidewalks and pedestrian curb ramps to move pedestrians through the intersection. The photo on the right is located just to the east of Route 18, and again, shows some of the pavement deterioration previously discussed, along with the lack of sidewalk and bicycle lanes. So the project goals will outline how the project will aim to correct the existing issues just reviewed. So the existing issues are repeated here in blue, and the goals followed in gray. For intersection safety, we're looking to improve upon both intersection and corridor safety throughout the project. For deficient bicycle accommodation, we're looking to incorporate bicycle accommodation into the roadway section. For pedestrian accommodation, the goals are to provide new sidewalk, curb ramps, and crosswalks for the entire project. For horizontal and vertical geometry, we're looking to incorporate improvements to the roadway curvature, improve site distance, and improve the roadway profile or the vertical geometry. For pavement deterioration, the goal is to provide a new pavement surface by means of full-depth reconstruction. And finally, for stormwater collection, the goal is to reduce roadside erosion and roadway flooding while also improving water quality treatment. So I'll now step through the specific scope of work for the project. A widened roadway cross-section is proposed, consisting of two lanes and shoulders suitable for bicycle accommodation. So a 32-foot cross-section versus the 22 to 24 feet of pavement that exists today. And this design has not changed since the prior project presentations at public meetings. The next scope item is ADA/AB compliant sidewalk and curb ramps are proposed along one side of the road for the entire project. Pavement reconstruction is proposed for the entire project length. Intersection improvements are proposed at Precinct Street and Route 18 intersections with Route 79. The traffic signal at Route 18 will be reconstructed. New regulatory and warning signs are proposed, along with new pavement markings, horizontal and vertical site distance improvements, and finally, stormwater improvements, consisting of a closed drainage system and water quality treatment. The next few slides will illustrate the proposed improvements in a cross-sectional view as if you were driving or walking on the roadway. The first section shows the segment from the beginning of the project at the Taunton City Line to Precinct Street. There are two 11-foot lanes proposed, along with a 5-foot bike lane on either side of the roadway, bike lane here and bike lane here. New sidewalk is proposed along the south side of the road or the right side of this graphic, separated from the roadway traffic by vertical granite curb. New hot-mix asphalt berm is proposed on the north side of the road to capture stormwater so that it can be treated and to minimize erosion of the roadside edge. With wetlands on both sides of the road in this area, there will be some retaining walls required, as shown on the bottom of the slide. So this cross-section depicts the segment of Route 79 from Precinct Street to Water Street. Again, two 11-foot lanes with 5-foot bicycle lanes on either side of the road, and sidewalk continues on the southerly side of the roadway. The main difference between this segment and the previous slide is there are no retaining walls required due to the lack of wetland resource areas in this roadway segment. This section depicts the area from Route 79 to Water Street, sorry, Route 79 from Water Street to Route 18. This is more than half of the project length at about 1.5 miles. The on-road improvements are identical to the previous sections, with the 11-foot travel lanes, the 5-foot bike shoulders. The difference with this section is the location of the sidewalk, which is now proposed on the north side of the roadway. Location of the sidewalk was selected based on several factors and constraints, including minimizing wetland impacts and evaluation of the density of developed properties on either side of the road. The final section is from Route 18 to Clear Pond Road. Again, identical on-road improvements as the remainder of the corridor, but now the sidewalk has shifted to the south side of the road again, primarily so that there is a logical location to end the sidewalk at the project limit, which will be at the intersection of Clear Pond Road. The intent of these next two slides is to give you an example of what the finished roadway section will look like. Both of these projects included a hot-mix asphalt sidewalk with vertical granite curb and a minimum 5-foot shoulder for bicycle combination and two travel lanes. Just another project example, very similar improvements. The last two slides for the proposed improvements will focus on the key intersections of Route 79 with Precinct Street and Route 18. And again, these slides have been shown at prior public meetings, and there's been very little change to these graphics. First, here is a colored version of our proposed design, where we've consolidated the two intersections with Route 79. There's one here and one here, and we've consolidated that into one traditional T-intersection with Route 79. There's several advantages to this layout, which include improvement of site distance for the vehicles exiting Precinct Street, reduction of the overall impervious pavement area for the intersection, creation of additional green space in this location for plantings or signage the town may wish to install. And finally, a shorter roadway crossing for pedestrians that are crossing Precinct Street and better sight lines to conflicting traffic for those pedestrians. Finally, this is the proposed intersection layout for Route 79 at Route 18. A new traffic signal will be constructed, which will improve visibility to the signal heads as compared to the existing traffic signal. Left-turn lanes will be added on both of the Route 79 approaches, here and here, as well as right-turn lanes on Route 18 southbound in this direction and Route 79 westbound in this direction. These turning lane improvements will improve safety and also reduce the delay of vehicles passing through the intersection. New pedestrian curb ramps and crosswalks will be constructed to accommodate pedestrians, and they'll be able to safely cross Route 18 and Route 79 using the traffic signal phases. Finally, bicycle lanes will be included on the Route 79 approaches to the intersection so cyclists can safely navigate through the intersection. How will traffic be affected during the construction of this project? So during construction, there will no doubt be some delays as the project progresses. The road will remain open, however, for the duration of the project, likely with one lane alternating traffic flow during normal work hours. Abutters to the project will also be able to access their property at all times as the contractor will be required to provide at least temporary access while working at driveway locations. Environmental permitting, there are several permits required for this project. I'll review those here. We'll be submitting an environmental notification form, also known as an ENF, in accordance with the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, or MEPA. The draft ENF is reviewed by MASTDOT's Environmental Services Unit. And after addressing any comments, we will then file with MEPA. A notice of intent will be submitted to the Lakeville Conservation Commission. This is required due to work that is proposed adjacent to and within existing wetland areas in buffer zones. The commission will ultimately issue an order of conditions once they approve the project plans. Also required for impacts to existing wetland areas is the United States Army Corps of Engineers Section 404 General Permit. We'll be submitting what is called a self-verification form for review. Finally, as a portion of the project occurs within an area of outstanding resource waters associated with certain public water supplies, the Section 401 Water Quality Certification Permit from the MASTDOT is required. I'll take a few moments now to review the project's schedule. We're currently participating in the design public hearing at the beginning of this timeline, with the 25% design already complete. Once any comments have been received following this hearing, the project will move into the 75% design phase, which we anticipate will be completed in the fall of this year. Following that submission, MASTDOT has approximately three months to review the submission, and then we move into the 100% design phase, expected to be complete by the spring of 2022. Again, MASTDOT will review the 100% submission, and the final PSNE submission will be prepared and submitted by the fall of 2022. This would then lead to an anticipated start of construction by the spring of 2023. I'll now turn it back over to Kathy for some final notes. Back to you, Kathy.
Thanks, Matt. As stated previously, the purpose of this hearing is to solicit your input regarding this project. As the plans are not yet complete, we may not be able to answer all of your questions or respond to your comments at this time. You will see that the notice of hearing is included on Page 2 of the handout. This notice appeared in the Taunton Daily Gazette on March 30th and April 6th of this year. This notice was also posted at the Town Hall, the library, and the town of Lakeville website. A copy of this notice will be attached in the final hearing transcript. You can email your questions and concerns to the email address shown on the screen. Please remember to indicate the project file number and identify yourself by name and affiliation, whether you are in a butter, local official, or concerned citizen. Questions and comments will be taken at this time. The questions and comments will be addressed in the order they are received. Joining me tonight to assist and answer your questions are Jerry Doherty, MASTDOT Right-of-Way, and MASTDOT District 5 representatives are Richard Oliveria and Alex Duggan. I'm sorry. Yes, yeah. If you wish to ask a question or make a comment verbally, select the participant button at the bottom of the screen, then select Raise Hand. The moderator will call on you and unmute you. If you prefer to use the chat feature, select the chat button at the bottom of your screen and type your question. We will start with the chat feature first, and then the people who wish to speak. Ask or submit only one question or comment at a time, and limit your time to two minutes. Our moderator this evening is Ben Boynton from Beta Group. Ben, do we have any questions?
Yes, the first question is from RB325. It's, "Why did this project get so delayed so significantly?"
Well, yeah, I can answer that. There was a period of time where the town had to seek approval from the community to approve funding for the final design and also to seek funding for the right-of-way acquisitions that will be necessary for the project.
That's the only question in the chat at this time, and I don't see any raised hands yet.
Does anybody wish to make a statement or make some kind of comment in the chat? We'll give you a few minutes.
Okay, we have a raised hand from IDUFR. I'm going to unmute you.
Could you indicate who you are, your name, and your affiliation, whether you're in a butter or how you're connected with this?
You'll have to unmute yourself.
My name's Michael Dufrain. I live at 149 Rhode Island Road in Lakeville, right in the Johnson Drive area. And I was just wondering if they were going to lower the road, because I do get a lot of water running into my yacht during any kind of rainstorm.
Yeah, Mike, I can answer that question. So generally, the roadway profile is not going to be lowered too much, but we are aware of the stormwater, the drainage concerns there. And at this time, we're looking at possibly some type of collection system on the opposite side of the roadway to alleviate that condition.
We have a question from the chat. It says, "What about taking property from homeowners who live close to the road already?"
So I'm not sure specifically what the concern is there, but there definitely will be some acquisitions required. Generally, most of the physical roadway improvements, the pavement and the sidewalk, are actually confined Are actually confined within the town's layout, what the town owns. So, you know, generally, there's a lot of properties along the corridor that. That may have a grassed area that extends right to the pavement. But the town actually owns, you know, a certain distance from the edge of pavement, so. There's actually very few areas where the sidewalk or the road will be on private property. There will be some easements needed. You know, temporary easements for the contractor to get on private property to grade out. You know, the improvements with some, you know, new grass and so forth. And there will be some permanent easements for mostly for the utility pole relocations. The poles and the overhead wires need to get moved back. So there'll be some aerial easements for those improvements.
Our next question is from Peg Cavallo. Says, do we know which end of the corridor will be started first?
Peg, no, we don't know that. We can't dictate to the contractor where they start. So that's really, you know, we provide some general traffic management guidelines on what hours they can work. And, you know, certain safety measures, but. We won't know until what end they plan to start until there's actually a contractor selected by MassDOT.
Okay, our next question's from Dan Wilga. It says, how will the traffic during construction be affected? Will there be detours, etc.?
Dan, there will not be. Right now, we're not anticipating detours. There will be a lot of, you know, one lane alternating traffic where one direction is stopped. Where half the roadway is being worked on and then the other direction is allowed to go. That will be the most common thing. There will be delays. You know, generally, the work hours will be somewhere between 9:00 and 3:00 PM. So that's generally what we know at this time.
We have a question from 70 Clear Pond Road. Says, is there projected cost per square footage for land to be acquired for properties affected by the project?
There's not a. Specific cost per square footage. That is up to the, the town needs to hire an appraiser when we get into the final design. And the appraiser will review the plans and they will come up with an appraisal report as to what. What the damages are to each property and what the value is. It's really impossible to come up with a per-square-footage cost because every property will be different as far as what the improvements are on that parcel.
All right, Brian Day asks, is the design at this time still the same with regards to there being a single sidewalk along the project as well as the shoulders on each side? Where mail trucks, delivery trucks or bicycles can safely be?
Yes, the project cross-section is the same as it's been presented. With an 11-foot lane and a five-foot shoulder on each side. You know, that five-foot shoulder is intended for bicycle traffic, but obviously it will be used by delivery. Trucks and mail trucks, they'll be able to pull over and, you know, if there's a bicycle coming, they'll have to either wait or navigate around that vehicle, but. You know, that five-foot shoulder will. Will also allow for, you know, a vehicle to pass. A vehicle that's parked on the side of the road better than they can today.
We have a question from RJ Mather. It says, will the utility poles stay on the side of the road where they currently are?
So the utility pole locations will vary greatly throughout the corridor. They will not necessarily remain where they are today. There will be a set of the latest plans posted on the town's website. You know, shortly after this meeting, within the next few days, so those plans will be available. And they'll, you know, the exact locations at certain points within the project. Will be able to be viewed on those plans.
Question from Peg Cavallo says. There being more pedestrian bicycle traffic, is there any thought to restrict large commercial vehicles on this route?
There is none at this time. I don't know if. Anyone from Mastah wants to jump in and explain the process. You know, we, we as the designer can't designate. You know. Exclude trucks from a route. There's a process for that that the state takes on. And given that this is a town road, I'm not sure what the process is for that, so I can't, I can't answer that question. But I, we're not aware of any, any concerns with, with commercial vehicle traffic on the route right now.
All right, I'm going to go over and unmute Christina.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for taking my question. I actually have a two-part question and kind of follows behind the truck traffic. And I heard someone giggle and it's really not funny because the semi-truck traffic. Is, just has increased substantially over these last years, but. My question, pedestrian access, bicycle access, car to safety are concerns or part of the project? Is there a thought to decreasing the speed limit? As it's a thickly or densely settled area and it's difficult as it is now to turn in and out of your driveway. So I fear this is going to be just as fast as, you know, Route 18 or something. So is there thought to lowering the speed limit? And the second part to my question is for folks that have landscaping in the front, that a part of that will be used for the sidewalk. Will that just be destroyed or will it be moved back? How will that work? Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, great question on the speed limit. You know, so the way speed limits are generally determined are through speed studies. And the speed study actually measures the average. Operating speed of vehicles on the roadway. And many times when speed studies are conducted. The speed limit is actually increased. Because the intent, you know, by posting a lower speed limit on a roadway that. Does not have any physical characteristics to slow vehicles down. It doesn't, it generally does not help with vehicle speeds. So, but one thing this project. Should do is because we are proposing the sidewalk. Where striping narrower travel lanes that are out there today. There will be, I know, I know a lot of folks, you know. May not feel this is a safe road to ride a bike on today, but when this is done, it will be used by bicycles and pedestrians. And once people start using it in that manner. Vehicles driving on the road, some, not all. Will, will see those, see that activity. They'll have the narrower travel lanes, the new pavement markings. And all those features tend to act as somewhat as a traffic calming measure. And it should slow vehicle speeds down for some. But again. The, the speed, just lowering a speed limit to decrease traffic speeds. That's not permitted. There's actually a speed study process that needs to be followed and. And again, a lot of times it results in a raising of the speed limit. Because it's kind of set at the, what's called the 85th percentile speed of vehicles on the roadway. So, and then on the landscaping issue. So any landscaping on private property that's impacted. Mastah's right-of-way policy is that any shrubs or bushes or, or trees of that nature. Are removed by the contractor. And they're not replaced by the contractor. However, the owner is compensated through the right-of-way process, so again, the town. Has to hire an appraiser for this project. The appraiser reviews the plans, any impacts on private property. And assigns a value. And then the owner is given a report that shows what their compensation is. And. You know, the town will review the plans with property owners as requested and go over those impacts, so. Does that answer your questions?
Sorry, I believe I remuted you.
I'm sorry, here I am. Thank you. It does, I just note that at the corner of precinct, at that intersection where it is dangerous, it's, the speed limit's 25 there. Cars seem to go a little slower there. So I didn't, I just thought that was a factor since it's, there's so many houses along our road, but.
Right. And part of the reason they, they travel slower there is because there's a curvature in the roadway that, that limits vehicles. To a certain speed generally, because it's, you know, it's uncomfortable. Uncomfortable to drive a curve at a higher speed because you feel like you're going to lose control of the vehicle, so. There's some natural geometry there that helps to keep speeds slower, but. Where we have, you know, long straight segments of the road that we can't change the alignment for. There's not a lot we can do to further reduce speeds and then it just becomes an enforcement issue.
I understand. I just want to comment one more thing that there's a slope in, in the road where I am. And traffic kind of comes down this hill and my driveway is almost a blind drive, so there's a very danger. I don't know if the contour of the road could be taken into consideration when you look at this. Because it's quite, it's, it's every day, it's a close call. Thank you very much.
What is your address?
It's 197 Rhode Island Road. Thank you.
See, we have a repeat question from 70 Clear Pond Road regarding the structures. Which landowners will be compensated for the structures? I think you already answered that. Dan Wilga, did you have your, you had your hand raised a couple of times, but I don't see your hand raised anymore.
Ben, I just want to address that question on the fences.
Okay, yep.
Because I, my reply was specific to landscape features as plantings, but. Yes, the same applies to fences and retaining walls. Those would just be removed. The only time a retaining wall would be replaced would be if it's actually holding up. Holding up something that would collapse onto the roadway or sidewalk. In that case. It would be replaced as part of the project, but say a balanced stone wall. That's, you know, on private property that would need to be impacted and I'm not sure we have that case, but. Those would be removed. They would actually be stacked. The stones would be stacked on the owner's property. And the owner would be compensated for that impact.
Yes, hi, this is Dan Wilga. Just a quick question for Matt. I appreciate you explaining the. The issue with speed limits, the lady that had just spoken about that. It definitely is a concern on 79. There's hundreds, if not thousands, of cars that travel that road every day. There is. An increase in truck traffic and by truck traffic, I mean 18-wheelers, dump trucks and so forth. I feel that the state should at least consider looking at those speed limits. Because those vehicles travel very, very fast. There's been several accidents, it's, you know, the townspeople know. So I, I would just like to at least have the state consider the speed limits because it is a very. Dangerous stretch of road. People neglect the speed limits. But overall, separately from that, I do want to commend the state on a nice proposal. Which is desperately needed for 79, especially with the resurfacing and sidewalks and so forth. But, you know. I guess what I'm saying is, is I understand the, the science behind it, but at least consider. Lowering the speed limits in some of those areas which are desperately needed.
Sure, we'll certainly bring this concern back to the, you know, the traffic section with MassDOT. And have that discussion as we, as we go into final design.
Thank you.
Right, we had a question.
Now, just, this is Rich, excuse me, from the district. I just wanted to add that. Once the project is completed, like, like Matt said, when you re-speed zone a road. Sometimes a speed limit can go up. So that's not a desirable outcome and we can't just arbitrarily lower a speed limit. It has to be based on a, you know, a speed zoning study, but. One thing that could be done, it's a town road, so when the project is completed, the town. And you see these all over the place now, which are the signs that tell you your speed. And sometimes that puts some second thoughts into people for driving fast or, you know. Thought that there might be a police officer around. So that's something that the town can do. In lieu of a, of a speed study which might not have the desired outcome.
Great point, Rich.
So we have a question that came in from the chat from RJ Mather. It says, my neighbor is thinking of putting in a fence. When will he know where it would be proper to put the fence on his boundary line?
So again, I would, I would recommend that when the, when the project plans are posted on the town's website. That, you know, that person could review those plans. You know, submit a question. Through the, you know, the email address on this presentation with some more specifics on the property. And we can try and help advise to someone that's trying to read those plans. To understand where the limit of work for the project will be, so if they, if they're looking to put a fence in. Before this project is constructed, they can understand where the limit of work is.
Right, I'm going to unmute IDUFR.
Sorry, I think, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Linda Dufresne. Again, I'm here with my husband Michael at 149 Rhode Island Road. And I know that two people before me have addressed the, the vehicles, the commercial vehicles, the 18-wheelers especially. And during the last 20 years, when I have lived in this house, I can tell you that the truck traffic has increased significantly. I sometimes want to go out there and count the trucks that pass by my home. Especially if there's the slightest little situation on Route 24. Route 79 is used as a cut-through. And many of these trucks are carrying very, very, very heavy loads. My home sits back quite a bit off of the road. And I tell you, I can feel the vibration of the trucks that pass by this house. Not only are they causing significant damage to the road. But they're causing significant damage to people's homes. And I can tell you this because I can again feel the vibration of these trucks passing by. And I wonder, at some point, some of these trucks that are passing by. Perhaps maybe they should have some kind of a toll system so that they're contributing to the cost that it takes. To upkeep a road like this street. And basically. It causes such property damage among everything. So not only am I concerned with the amount of trucks and the traffic. When you straighten out the road, Route 79, is this going to allow those trucks to continually go the speed that they travel? Every single day? And that is my question and I appreciate you listening to me and I hope. And that is my question. And I appreciate you listening to me. And I hope that something can be taken into consideration. One other thing, I am close to Route 18. And when I tell you in the morning, the traffic is backed up to beyond my home at a standstill so that people can get around at that traffic light. And that is a major concern.
So, yeah, what I, a couple of things, Linda. So we will not be making any changes to the roadway that would, you know, straight, you mentioned straightening the road. Generally, the roadway is going to be where it is today. We're going to be widening the pavement so that we can fit those bike lanes in, so we can get the sidewalk in. The new pavement surface will be much smoother. The, the pavement that's out there, we did some boring investigations, which measure how much pavement is out there. This, the, the thickness of the pavement is much less than it should be that's out there today. So that's why a lot of the pavement has been damaged and rutted. So when trucks travel over that, definitely I understand that the vibrations that are probably occurring, when the new pavement structure is proposed, those vibrations should be significantly reduced with the new smooth pavement. You know, this, it's beyond the scope of this project to try and limit commercial traffic on this roadway. But again, the, the new pavement surface should, should help reduce with the vibration issues. And again, the speeds, it, it's really an enforcement issue that the town needs to undertake, or by installing those, those radar signs that Rich mentioned, that show people how fast they are going. As far as Route 18 goes, that intersection, you know, there should be some significant decreases in the amount of traffic that, that need to queue up and stop at that intersection with the additional lanes we're providing in the new traffic signal system. So, you know, there, there will always still be traffic backed up at, at any, any traffic signal, but that should definitely be improved with this project.
Hey, Dana Stone, I'm going to unmute you.
Hello, Dana.
You may have to click the unmute, mute button as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just another comment. Mine is very similar to the last lady that spoke. We've lived here about three years and we're right across from LaBaron Country Club. And I can tell you that, that the size of the trailers, trailer trucks and their heavy, heavy loads are, it's not, they're just not riding down, down the roadway. They're speeding at high rates of speed. God forbid, any of those trailer trucks lost control and hit somebody or something. Is there some way that, that the town could reduce the size of those trucks that are going by, that, that use that road? They're very dangerous. And I think with a new highway, with new roads, and you're going to have more traffic and you're going to have higher speeds. And no one seems to be out there, at least not to my knowledge, checking on these speeds or doing something about it. I, I think that's, and, and not only that, like the last lady said, every morning and during the day, you can, these trucks go by at a high rate of speed and we can feel our, our homes vibrating when they go by. That's how fast they're going. So I, I just wanted to add that in because I think it's a very dangerous situation now. And I don't think it's going to get any worse unless something is done to control, curtail it a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. I, you know, I, again, I'm not sure I can provide any more information than the response to the previous question on that. But, you know, again, it's, the speed issue is just an enforcement issue, a long-term enforcement issue. And, you know, the project should not be creating any situation or, or geometry within the roadway that encourages higher speeds by any manner.
All right, I'm going to move back to some questions from the chat. We have one from Peg Cavallo, which talks about the smoothing of Precinct Street. And it looks like it'll, the curve will be eased on the southbound side, therefore taking a portion of my driveway and front yard, including a fence, which is fine. I just wondered if that's the case. I'm at 199 Rhode Island Road.
Yeah, hi Peg. Yes, the, generally the curve at that location is, of the road is going to remain as it is today. And at that location, there is a portion of the fence on that property that will need to be removed just for, for grading purposes. Again, the roadway pavement is remaining within the town street layout. But a portion of the fence at this, at this location will be impacted.
Okay, Rich, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, Rich LeCarron brought a selectman. We want you to know that we're just as concerned about the speed on that road as everybody is. And we do patrol the road, the road quite frequently. But we did apply for a grant and we just received two of those radar safety signs. And we are going to put at least one of them, maybe two of them, on Route 79. So what it is, is it's a solar sign and it tells you how fast you're going and it blinks and so forth. So we'll be installing that very shortly, as a matter of fact. So hopefully that'll help a little bit.
Okay, Franklin, I'm, I'm thinking that's why you had your hand raised.
Yeah, just to add to that, that was something that as Rich spoke to, we're definitely aware of. I don't, I don't speak on behalf of the chief of police, but he's definitely aware of it. And that's the reason why he went out and tried to get these. And they're also going to be something we're going to definitely improve on as far as getting possibly a few more of those and move those around, not just for Route 79, but also as we resurface roads throughout town and speeding issues arise, we're going to be moving them around into those areas.
Oh, our next question from the chat comes from Nick K. He says, I'm at 204 Rhode Island Road. Which side will the sidewalk be on?
I'll try and check on that. I believe at 204 sidewalk will be on the opposite side of the road from this property.
We have another question from RJ Mather. Says, will mailboxes need to be moved to the side of the roadway opposite the sidewalks?
Currently, the mailboxes are proposed to be relocated on the same side of the road that they exist today. So there may be some with, within the sidewalk, if that's what side of the road they're on today.
Okay, we have a question from, says owner. Do you know how much of the property located at 149 Bedford Street, the corner of 18 and 79, will be taken?
I, I don't know that offhand. But again, the, I think the set of plans that will be posted on the town's website will be very helpful in determining that. And certainly feel free to follow up with, you know, questions on it by email and we can, we can help answer any, any detailed questions about the impacts.
Okay, that's all the questions we have for now. Oh, have another raised hand from Linda. It's the IDUFR.
Sorry, I was muted. I know the project is designed to be a safety project. But with all of this construction going on, new sidewalks, new bike trails, will there be any new trees along the sidewalks? Is it something that will be, you know, a beautification project as well? If the city of, the town of Lakeville is investing all this, all this money into this project, along with Massachusetts, is that going to be something that will be considered in the project? Like a lot of times you'll see nice trees along the new roadway.
You know, that, there are a few locations at the, at intersections where there's, there may be opportunities for trees. And we can certainly, the, the current design does not propose any trees outside of the intersection locations. I would have to, you know, where MastDOT is paying for the construction, I would have to bring that question back to Mastha to see if there's other locations where we can add new tree plantings. But usually, the locations where that would happen would be within the existing town layout, not trees planted on private property.
Yeah, Matt, I just would add that perhaps what the questioner is thinking of is kind of trees along the sidewalk. But you know, to put a grass, to put a strip of grass, as you know, in addition to a sidewalk, widens the overall section and it, you know, creates more impacts and increases the cost. And, you know, on a two and a half mile project, it would be quite impactful. So our landscape section, when we review the, the next submission, is pretty good at seeing where possible landscaping can take place in the town layout or at, you know, opened up green, green space areas as a result of, you know, the intersection changes or the intersection, you know, improvements. So certainly, you know, there's no opposition to doing that, but it has to be done kind of selectively. And, you know, it can't just be done anywhere.
Thanks, Rich.
Okay, Kathy, that looks like all the questions we have.
Okay, very good. You can see the email address to if you think of any other questions or comments that you have. You can use the email address that is shown on the screen. Thank you much, very much for showing up and have a very good evening. Good night, everyone.